Call to order, the July 2nd, 2019 Board of Commissioners meetings. Please silence your cell phone, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers on the bookshelves if you need one. Now we do a speaker request. The Commission now utilizes a speaker request form. If you'd like to speak on any item, please complete a speaker request form located in the bookshelves in the back of the chambers and return it to the Commission Office Manager, Holly Hennies, located on the lower right-hand side of the dials. Commissioner?
First, we're going to have a moment of silent reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Michael Lewis. Would you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next is the review and approval of the agenda. We'd like to pull number 12, if that's okay. A motion, please.
Move to approve the agenda minus item 12. Second?
First by second, or first by, or second by DeSanto. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Ms. Holly.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on uncontroversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following two items. Approval of the minutes on the regular meeting of June 18th, 2019. And number six is to schedule a public hearing at 9:15 a.m. on July 16th for Budget Supplement SP 19-015 for the General Fund Jail Budget.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Is there anyone from the public who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? At this time, any Commissioners who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? If not, a motion, please.
So move.
Move by Ross Connect, second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is the regular agenda items, seven through 15. Number seven would be the annual libraries update. First, we'll have Hill City, Ms. Tammy Alexander.
Good morning. Good morning. Again, my name's Tammy Alexander, and I am the Director of the Hill City Public Library. I have, I'm nearing my two-year anniversary, August 23rd, and I must say, time flies when you're enjoying what you do. It goes really fast. Right now, what's going on? We're in the middle of our kids' summer reading program, and at this time, we have 62 registered kids, all competing. We give out weekly prizes such as ice cream cones from the Hill City Dairy Queen, which is the favorite, of course, prize. At the end of six weeks, all the kids that have competed and completed the six-week program are, their names get put into a drawing board. We have bikes, pre-K, we have a strider bike for one girl, one boy, and a helmet, and that's donated generously by the Lewis family. And middle school, we do bikes as well, and those are donated by the Tin City Masonic Lodge Number 112, and they've been doing that for...
Years.
Years. At middle school, we're doing a one-girl, one-boy, $50 gift card to Amazon, and same with high school. They like to do their own shopping, and preferably, they buy books, but it's kind of whatever they like to do. Lauren, the craft stuff too, so we do that. We're also providing a weekly program. Today, we're doing a public show. I hope not better. My staff's handling that today. It's Marky Schultz, Dragons Are Too Seldom. We've been averaging a good 100 people at the program, so it's free to the public. It's generously hosted by the Boys and Girls Club because they have a big gym, and we've had the Hill City Garden Club, Planted Flowers, that's the first thing we do in the summer, and then hopefully, their plants grow, and in July, then they show their plants. So during the flower show, Black Hills Raptors, and we had the Children's Orchestra, and they presented Rumpelstiltskin with a harp. They do the story, and they play the music. It's really, it's wonderful. Like today, we have the Dragons, Custer State Park will be here on the 9th, Troy Graham Music Show, and then the Children's Concert, once again, is our last program for the summer, and that ends on July 23rd, so then we're, the kids are out of that Bike Week stuff. And that brings us, do you have any questions for me?
Any Board, any questions for Ms. Tammy?
No questions. Sounds like you're getting some good attendance at your programs.
We do, yeah. And we're even trying to pull in some of the tourist kits, because they do, luckily in Hill City, they do extend their stay, so it provides them something to do, then they come back to the library. The library's been great, and we have been very busy this summer with the rain. It's great for us. I think one day, we had 120 people in the library because of the rain.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I just want to say thank you, Tammy, and Michael.
All right. We do have one more big thing happening, and I'll bring, let Michael step onto that.
Your name, sir?
Those of you not familiar with our library building, about five years ago, we inherited the old Hill City High School, I guess, throwback letter, word, administration building. Went in, completely stripped it out, beg, steal, whatever we could do, bookshelves, put them in, put the books in, and we're off and running. At this point, we've got a pretty good library. A couple of years ago, the city gave us enough money to rewindow the place. Last year, we relit the place with LED lights, but we still had the big problem, and that's with the kids. The kids' area was about as big as this, and it's small, and we really pushed the kids. Preschool and kindergarten kids, that's our thing. Our thinking is, if we can smack the kids early, we can keep them. So you have a hard time with an area like this, when the kids start rocking and rolling with Legos and all these kind of things. It sounds like you have a riot going on, and at the other end of the library, you have the old folks trying to read and do things, and that doesn't work real well. The question was brought up, we have some garages out back that we inherited also, could we do something with one of them? So we had a contractor come, take a look, and yeah, he said, "You probably could, but it's going to take this much money." Went back to the friends of the library and said, "This is what it's going to cost, what can we do?" We had an older couple that did a challenge, and within about two weeks, we had our money. So back to the city council and said, "We got our money, are you going to help us?" They said, "You bet, go to it." So they gave us the flexibility to completely design it, do the bids, get things going. Last Saturday, the volunteers did their last paint job on the outside, and it's ready to go. So it's been a big deal for us, it really has. So if anybody, including Ron, gets down that way, take a look. We're very proud of it, and the kids are proud of it, they really are. That's their place. And in fact, we've had some board meetings there, and we've had some adult book club meetings there. It's a very uplifting place, so. Anyhow, that's what's going on with Hill City. I don't know if anybody's got any questions, why?
And what's your name, sir?
I'm Mike Lewis.
Thank you.
Yes.
Sounds like both of you have a passion for what you're doing. You're moving your library ahead, and you're also helping your community and the children in your community. That's pretty huge for any community doing those programs that are positive for kids, and reading is huge.
It is.
Well, if you're going to live there, you need to do something, you know? And this is our something.
Well, you guys have that passion, and I commend you both. That's pretty awesome.
And we thank you for your funding. That's a big thing for us, it really is, so we appreciate it, so.
As I was saying, Michael and Tammy, thank you so much for all that you do for the Hill City Library and giving kids an alternative, things to do in Hill City, so I will stop by and see your, see your work.
Very good, thank you.
There's any questions for Tammy or Michael?
I want to know if he's going to get an ice cream cone when he's there.
He's too old for it. He's too old.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Rapid City, Terry Davis, our Assistant Director, Sean Minkel.
Good morning.
Good morning. I was expecting Keystone, but, okay. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this morning. I'm Terry Davis, the Director of the Library, Sean Minkel, Assistant Director. You probably are aware that libraries are the community's education departments, and we essentially serve people year-round, ages from cradle to grave. We have two locations. We have our main library on Quincy Street, which you may be familiar with. We also have a small neighborhood library in North Rapid City at the General Beadle Elementary School, and that is operated as a partnership with the school district. I believe the vote to provide county library service was in 1998, and we appreciate the fact very much that the county commission decided at that point to contract with the existing four public libraries. I think it's a win-win all around. In our case, the county funding comprises 11% of our budget. County users make up 18% of our registered borrowers, and they use 20% of our materials. So I think that demonstrates that the need and the interest is still there. Libraries do continue to be busy, even in the age of Amazon and Google. You do have a copy of our 2018 annual report, but I'd like to feature a couple of items. Last year, we provided one-on-one helping service to 134,000 individuals, and that was to help them with information and technology needs, whatever that might be. We had nearly 45,000 people attend our library events, and we continue to have about 1,100 people come into the library on a daily basis, and that does not include the people who use our virtual library services. One of the things we share with the other libraries in the county is a focus on encouraging youth literacy during the summer. Tammy mentioned that a little bit with the summer reading program. The goal is to overcome that summertime slump where kids might stop reading during the summer and then have to play catch-up when they get to school in the fall. Our intention is to encourage them to read throughout the summer so they maintain and hopefully improve their reading skills. And we had 1,500, over 1,500 show up at our kickoff day, so it is a wildly popular program. We also continue to educate kids and teens with STEM and STEAM learning activities throughout the year, whether that's kids coding, or maker space labs, or some kind of hands-on development and learning. We have also begun to assist with small business development efforts through our Foundation Center Grants Research Collection, if somebody needs some funding. And we've also helped people manufacture or fabricate their widgets before they go into production. They've used our 3D printers and fine-tuned their, whatever it is that they develop, and then they were able to go into production. And one of those companies went on to purchase his own 3D printing so that he could do that himself, too. We also have vinyl cutting for signs, we have large format printing, and we have laser cutting and engraving, and small businesses, as well as the general public, have availed themselves of those things. So the library does all of this while still maintaining those traditional and relevant collections for the public, books, magazines, DVDs, more. I think our most heavily used and rapidly growing collections are the e-collections, the e-magazines, the ebooks, streaming video, e-audios. Those are accessed 24/7 through the library, and people love those. Because people live and work across jurisdictional lines, particularly in this area, we're working on ways to seamlessly provide library service. Census data shows that of the workers in Pennington County, 12,000 of them come from outside the county boundaries. So right now, we have a pilot project with Sturgis Public Library whereby we will accept their library cards, they will accept our library cards, and the purpose of this is really to benefit Ellsworth Air Force personnel who live on base, but they're in the Meade County area, but they still consider Rapid City to be their home. So we're midway through that project now, small numbers, but growing, and it's working well. We also have, I think, an effective and collaborative working relationship with the other libraries in the county, particularly through the Black Hills Library Consortium. Keystone and Wall are members of that consortium. We hope we can encourage Hill City to join us in the near future. And the primary focus of that initially was cost savings through the collective purchase of the base system that all libraries use for their catalogs, their patron database, their check-in and checkout systems. And we've begun doing a little bit more with collaborative borrowing and resource sharing as well. So if you haven't been to our library recently, I would encourage you to contact us. We can give you a personalized tour, or as a group. I think you would be very surprised by what we have on offer, so please drop in, and we'll be open to any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Ron, did you have anything to say?
I think she covered most of it.
I worked with Sean, very nice. Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I stop by the library probably three, four, or five times a week to make Quick Print.
Oh, yes.
You guys have the Quick Print option in there where you can come in and pull your documents down out of the cloud, whatever that is, and print it off, and it comes in very handy when you don't have time to run back to the office to make print, you just stop by the library and use that, that resource. And every time I'm there, I'm really quite surprised at how many people are in the library utilizing it pretty much any time of the day. It doesn't seem whether morning, afternoon, or evening, there's lots of people down there, so that's nice to see.
And when there's kids' activities go on, it is somewhat controlled chaos, so it gets a little wild and crazy in there sometimes.
You may have seen on Facebook or on the news when we had alpacas in the library.
Oh.
And that was a big deal, and the Facebook page or post for that went viral, and we got comments from around the world on that, so that was fun.
You had a harp player in there last week.
We've had a harp a number of times.
Quite a few people in there watching that harp player.
Yeah, a young lady who is local and very talented, yes.
Commissioner LaCrae?
I just want to say, Mark's your liaison. There were some miscommunications between me and Mark, and I ended up showing up at your board meeting, and I was very, very impressed. But I also took part years back, I don't know if it was a strategic plan, but Malcolm Chapman was gathering some information on where the library's going to go. You know, with Amazon and all the stuff that's been going on, they felt the numbers were going to start to drop, and they needed, the library needed to come up with a plan and start doing other things, and you guys have done an excellent job. I mean, there were so many things going on down there. You go down there, and they have kids, things upstairs, they hold meetings to draw people in. I don't know how many meetings I've been to where they had it upstairs and we'd done that, and so you guys are getting diversified to draw the people in, and I think that's a wonderful thing, because it was scary for a while with libraries. They were, you know, with the digital books and everything else, everybody thought they were, but you guys, I think, have rebounded and come up with a plan. All you guys work with, and like you said, getting the kids in young and bringing them in is the key, but also drawing the people in with those meetings and being diversified. So I think you guys are doing a really good job. I appreciate it.
I've worked in public libraries for a long time, and every development seems to send a ripple of fear throughout libraries. You know, first of all, we had online catalogs and not the card catalog, and the fear was, people won't need to ask us questions anymore, but yet, we were busier. And then Google came along, and, or the internet came along in the early 90s, and why will libraries need, or why are libraries needed? They can look it up on the internet. Well, yet, we were busier and busier. Same with Google, same with Amazon, so no matter what it is, there's always people who need help navigating that information forest, and there just seems to be always a need, because we do get busier and busier and have more and more diverse questions that come to us, absolutely.
Just one follow-up. Are you, on the economic part, are, at one time, you used to help with resumes? Are you guys still doing that, right?
We don't write resumes for people. We will certainly give them resources, we have templates they can use, but we have helped. We've done proofreading of resumes and cover letters, so we'll, we'll do that.
That's good.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Thank you for your service and dedication to the library in Rapid City.
Thank you. I like the comment Ms. Davis said, "We serve people cradle to the grave." That's, that's actually a true statement.
Yes, we, we do home delivery services for those people who, for whatever reason, cannot get out of their homes.
And when that came about, I thought that was probably about the awesomest program you could have, because a lot of people, if they're disabled, or, you know, you get to the point where you can't drive, it's good entertainment, and a lot of people like to read and, and have that library service. I've had a lot of people comment it still to a lot of the city, how much that means to them, so.
Definitely.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Sean, for what you guys do.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have Wall Library, Director Lacy Carson, and Library Board President Johnny Nguyen.
It's just me, just Johnny.
Are you Johnny?
I'm Johnny. I'm president of the board, and while Lacy has left us, and we have a brand-new library director who is, I mean, like, brand-new and, like, still in shock.
Would you like to, would you like to come up, ma'am, and greet the board today? We appreciate it. That way, we, a lot of people watch this program, and they can see.
This is Esther Johansson.
Good morning, Ms. Esther. We're not that scary.
We've decided that when we grow up, we, our building is about as big as from here, where you guys are. We thought we wanted to be the Hill City building, but maybe Rapid City. We have, we have great ideas. First, I really would like to please begin by saying to us the two most important words. Thank you. Sorry. I'm such a library freak. We want you to really hear us, that without you, we couldn't do what we do in that little tiny building. We appreciate your support, both financially and everything else you do for us, and we couldn't exist without you, we just couldn't. Because of you, we're able to raise our standards of contribution and make sure that we offer just as many quality and beneficial books, programs, and adventures in learning and entertainment as we possibly can. And it enables our patrons of all ages to do the exact same thing for themselves, which is one of our goals. And then, if that happens, I think we and you have done our jobs to the best of our abilities. I've probably mentioned in front of you before how, in this day and age of constant electronic everything, really, it's our desire to teach our youngster the importance and value of holding an actual book in their hands, and there is a difference, and they express that to us, and their parents tell us, that they say that at home. When you see the face of a little rancher, farm kid, who actually comes in and holds a book in his hands, and realizes he can take it home, and he can, he can read it as many times as he wants to, and then, in two weeks, he can come back, give those back to Esther, and she'll let him do it all over again. The looks on their faces would do it all for you. We had a little pint-sized girl who wanted to take ballet lessons, but there weren't any classes close by unless she drove to Rapid, which they couldn't do. So we found a book for her, not we, Lacy, on beginning ballet, and the look on her little face, I'm telling you, it's for kids. And even though that book was about a mouse, it had ballet poses and tutus and positions in it, and she came marching back in, and she showed us what, she knew them. She knew them from reading the book about a mouse. It's different on the internet. She shows us every once in a while everything she's learned, actually. And something like that is, is so trivial, but you, we have to realize that that can offer a life-changing possibility to a kid, and that makes it worth it. Sometimes, we get high school kids preparing for college, or younger students wanting to research the history of our area, and we have that. And I'm especially proud of the last one, having history of our area in our library. I took a book I had contributed to, to the school a few years ago, to donate one to their school library, and I was told, "No, thank you. We don't teach that." And I said, "What?" And they said, "We don't teach the history of our area here." So when the, and they didn't even want a book on it for kids to be able to get to. So when kids want to research the history of their grandparents, or farming, or something, they come to us, and we have it. And we, we've built a nice little corner, and they come to their little public library, and it makes it all worthwhile for us. We serve a lot of senior citizens who spend their lives, really, with books in their hands, and they want to read a series probably by their favorite author. It's hard for them to get to Rapid or to navigate the wonderful Rapid City library, so they come to us, and their series are on our shelves if we know what they're into, or Esther will come and pick them up through the library exchange that we have with, with the Rapid City Library, which is wonderful. I could go on and on about the different interests of the people we serve, and these are people who many times would not have anybody looking out for them, caring them, giving them a hug or a pat, a pat on the, on the shoulder, but we do that. We're very small, very cozy, and we have served so many people in so many different situations. Since I've been on the board, which some of you think was back in the Dark Ages, me too, actually, we've been doing this with what has seemed to be a constant changing of the guard at our library directors' desk. Since I've been on, Esther will be my fourth director, and we've been lucky in such a small, little area to find people who have at least the basics. We did get Teresa from Rapid City who hit the ground running, which was wonderful, but we get people like Esther who have certain areas of expertise but are very willing to learn the other areas, and that's very important to us. We're grateful. We've, we've raised the library's visibility in our community, and we serve a big area. Those people from Interior, people from Phillip, Creighton, New Underwood, they, a lot of them come to us. We participate in parades, take part in community events and programs, we bring in speakers and readers, we continue our summer reading program, we've, we have wonderful prizes for all ages, and really, one of our favorite things is our weekly one-hour Storytime and Craft Hour for the little ones. Most of all, we serve the needs of those who need us, and they do it with a smile. And that's something you can't get from the internet, or Kindle, or anything that involves pushing letters, or buttons, or scrolling on a keyboard. Tears are coming again. I'm leaving the library board. It breaks my heart, but I am, and I'm hoping that those who follow can do it even better. I really wish those old-timers who built our little rock hut building back in the 30s so they'd have a place for their city council meetings, and to meet and play cards and visit. I wish they could see what that little building offers now. Every time you go in our front door, you can see their names. They scratch their names in the big, indecisive rocks that are around the front of the door, and I'm not sure what they'd have to say probably about the row of Tesla plugins that have been installed behind the library. Probably something like, what the sweep is that? I don't know. But I think they'd be really proud of what a haven their little rock hut has, has become so many years down the road. And in a nutshell, the goal I have to strive and strive to lead toward has been very simple. Offer as much as we can to as many as we can, and my motto, kind of, with everything I work at or serve on, is find out what they want and give it to them. It's that simple, and there's a way. And it's been a privilege to be able to help do that, and thanks.
Johnny, you're going to be well missed there.
Thank you.
Did you scratch your name on a rock?
I, I'm almost old enough, they won't let me.
The other thing is, Ms. Esther, can you tell us about the library exchange? That sounds very interesting, how you come to Rapid City, and what that program is, and how that works?
When someone asks for a book and we don't have it, we reach out to wherever we can get it. Then, twice a month, we come to Rapid and pick up the
Ms. Esther, can you tell us about the library exchange? Uh, that sounds very interesting, how you come to Rapid City and what that program is and how that works.
When someone asks for a book and we don't have it, we reach out to wherever we can get it. Um, then, twice a month, we come to Rapid and pick up the books that people have asked for. And, um, we, um, bring back the ones that we've, on the bar mode before.
So, Ms. Esther, can you take ten books, or how, how many books do they usually let you take at a time?
Oh, I don't know about that.
When I said brand new, I meant brand new.
That's gonna be awesome. It's kinda like the senior program we have in Rapid City that, you know, you're helping others so they can, they can also enjoy the, the library services. And that's pretty awesome.
We do have people from the country, like ranch people who live in the country, and can't really motivate them to, them to Rapid. Their neighbors, their younger ranching neighbors will come in and pick up books for them. It's wonderful.
Nice.
We wouldn't have this if we didn't have the library.
We appreciate you. Commission, any words?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross.
I just wondered, can, can folks, if they've got books through paperback that they don't want, instead of throwing them away, is there a way that they can take them to the library where they can get passed out to the general public?
We do that. We have free book, a little free book thing shelf in there, where they can come take anything. And some of those are hardcover, uh, books from there. But we also have, have a lot of that. And we've taken it to the Prairie Village, which is the senior residence. Uh, and, and we exchanged them after a while, and exchanged them. And we will give them to other groups. We had a group that we sent them to, I can't, I don't know what it was, because I didn't do it. But we'd get six of those boxes and send them in, for ones we really still had and couldn't find a new home for. And they dumped us. They sent us a breakup note. So, we, we, one of our board members took a bunch of them. I don't remember where she took them. But she had a few older people, I think, who wanted a stack of books that they could read through, and then bring back and get new ones. And so, we're kinda just doing that on our own time.
Yeah, I've seen people read a paperback in a day and then,
Yeah.
they pay seven dollars for it and,
They do that, too. They do that.
That's great.
And, and they retain. I don't know how they do that, because I couldn't remember where Kansas City Street was. But there, it's amazing. And I think a lot of that is from them reading so much. It activates their brain. And, oh gosh, how I wish I could bring some of them up here to see some of this stuff that Sean, who I love, does.
Well, the next time I get to Wall, I'll stop in and,
Please do.
check it out.
We're open Wednesday.
Wednesdays from twelve to seven, Thursdays from nine to twelve thirty, one thirty to five, and on Fridays from eight to one.
She's got it.
Maybe we'll have to all do a commission library tour and go to each one.
Wouldn't it be fun?
Yeah.
It would be fun.
We'll buy you a donut at Walgreens. Walgreens, you know what? We'll give you a donut. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Esther.
Thank you for all of your years as a librarian.
Thank, it's been a thousand.
Appreciate your service, Ms. Johnny. Next, we're on number eight, and that item's from the auditor. Auditor Cindy Muller.
She's out today.
Okay.
My name is Mary Isreal.
Hi, Ms. Mary.
Hi. We just have a, um, a business that would like to request a new mal beverage license. The so Jordan.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Go move.
Second.
Moved by Drews, second by Ross Connect. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Item nine is disposal of county-owned property across street facility, seven twenty-five La Crosse Street. Do you have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
Uh, I'd like to postpone this item indefinitely.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
Can I speak on it, Madam Chair?
Commissioner.
Uh, this is the building on La Crosse Street, which we will be, uh, basically, uh, done using later this year. Uh, we're just looking at some alternatives of, uh, what, what may happen with that facility. And so, we need a little additional time to come with some recommendations for the commission.
Any other discussion?
Just a question.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I, I guess I'd like a little update on what some other considerations are. I, I thought this memo was pretty open, but it, uh, we, is there some plans to use it for something else, or is that why we're?
I think we'll get an update once we move forward on it a little bit. Um, what's kinda happening, the sheriff can call you, um, Commissioner LaCroy on kinda that update, or Commissioner DeSanto, if you'd like some of that update, or Commissioner Ross Connect or Drews. They're just kinda looking at different, different options, but they're not set on anything. They're just kinda working on it behind the scenes, trying to figure out what's the best option for it.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Next, items from equalization. Shannon Rittberger. We have a different name at each coming up.
I could not be here this morning. Um, Gordon Wendell, equalization. I would like to request a, uh, an abatement for Vance Alexander, tax ID one zero five one eight, eleven eight seven nine McVeigh Road, Hill City, in the amount of four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. His house, uh, partially burned in late October of twenty eighteen.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
Moved by DeSanto, second by Ross Connect. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Number eleven. Items from highway, Superintendent Joe Miller, twenty nineteen Highway Infrastructure Program Fund Apportionment Agreement. There's another guy coming up.
It's a vacation.
Everybody's gone today. And your name's her.
Pennington County Highway, that is a mothfold saying that. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, uh, we got an email from the state of South Dakota, informing us that, uh, they had received an apportionment of highway infrastructure program funds, uh, pursuant to Department of Transportation Appropriations Act two thousand and nineteen. The state received approximately, uh, twenty million dollars, uh, in federal funds. Twenty million, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and eight, uh, dollars. This money will be distributed to state and local communities, counties and cities, uh, based on, uh, the percentage of bridge decking they have considered in poor condition. Uh, the bottom line is here, I guess, that, uh, Pennington County, uh, well, these, the, the, I should start, go back here a little bit here. The statewide, uh, local share of the funding, um, for local government entities and cities, uh, received will be seventeen mil, seventeen million, three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, or seventeen point three one three million dollars, I'm sorry. Uh, these funds will be shared with sixty-two counties and twenty-two cities and towns across the state. Um, again, based on, uh, the percentage of decks, bridge decking that's considered in poor condition, uh, that was listed on the National Bridge Inventory, uh, of, during, uh, December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. So they're going back a couple of years on, on, uh, the list of, on the bridge conditions. Uh, Pennington County has twenty-six bridges that are identified on that list, uh, that would qualify for rehabilitation or replacement work. And, uh, at this time, Pennington County is slated to receive five hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and eight cents, uh, if a funding agreement was approved with the state of South Dakota. I guess with that, I'm open for some questions, if you'd like.
Any questions or a motion? Commissioner LaCroy.
Mark, this, excuse me, this is, uh, for the surface. This isn't actually for the structure of the bridges. Am I correct? When I'm reading this, it's, it's for the, sounds like it's for the resurfacing of the, of the decking. Not so much the structure, since we've got somebody that are, are in desperate need to repair it. Am I wrong?
Well, not exactly. There, there are stipulations with this money, of course. There's always strings attached when we get, it seems like, when we get federal dollars and goes through the state and, and down to us. Uh, but there are, uh, some of the stipulations here are that, uh, the counties who have bridges listed in poor condition, and they would, they will only spend the funds on the following eligible expenditures through an agreement. And that's bridge replacement, bridge rehabilitation, or preservation on those bridges listed in the poor condition. Uh, we can use that for fu, funding to match federal emergency management funds on bridges. Uh, we can use that money for, uh, a funding match for a bridge improvement grant, uh, for bridges on the list. Uh, we are not eligible for bridge improvement grants through the state. And we can also use that mon, funding for a match on emergency relief program funds for bridges on there. So, uh, no, in essence, we can replace or, uh, re-hil, rehabilitate any of the bridges on that list. And in fact, uh, on the list there, we have three bridges that we've had some hydraulic study, hydraulic work done. And we have intended they were listed on our two thousand and twenty budget, uh, for replacement. And one of those is on Sonquist Road, and two on Thunderhead Falls Road. So, we could use that money to replace these three bridges next year, if approved.
Okay, thanks.
Good news.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Mark, how do, how do, how do you identify the twenty-six bridges? I think the county has one hundred and twenty-eight. And so, we picked twenty-six that we felt were eligible for this. I just wonder what the process was.
The twenty-six bridges on this list,
Right.
uh, they were picked by, uh, the federal government. There's, uh, all of our bridges under federal law are inspected every other year. Every two years, a bridge needs to be inspected. And, uh, those inspections are turned in to state and federal. They're listed on the National Bridge Inventory. So, they inspected those bridges, or looked over those bridging inspections. And, uh, they're the ones that chose to put them on this list. But they happen to be the ones that are on our list, too, many of them. Some of these have already been fixed. Like I said, that list was two thousand and seventeen. Uh, there's a, we had fixed, or replaced the Hammerquist Bridge and, uh, and Sher, well, some on Sheridan Lake Road, we had replaced Hammerquist and Sheridan Lake Road. We had done some work in two thousand and seventeen that were on this list. In two thousand and eighteen, uh, there were two, uh, on Dark Canyon Road that were repaired last year. So, they're no longer on this list. And, uh, two thousand and nineteen, uh, well, the one sixty-fourth bridge, which, uh, the flooding took out this spring, is slated to be replaced. So, the bridges they chose were also bridges that we have been working on and, uh, will be working on in the future.
Are they the wooden construction like the ones on one sixty-fourth, or they, uh, a different type of construction? Uh, the three, I guess, that you're looking at, two on Thunder, two, two on Thunderhead Falls and,
the one on one sixty-fourth street is already, has already been, uh, it's already under contract. So, the, the three that, uh, we had slated for two thousand and twenty are not yet. So, we could, uh, right now, what we're planning on doing is, uh, the one in Tissonquist, and the two bridges into Thunderhead Falls roads are all on a, a one-way-in, one-way-out road. Uh, we're, we believe that, at, at this time, we're hoping that we can use the same type of structure that we used on one sixty-fourth. And instead of building, uh, a five, or six, or eight hundred thousand dollar structure, we can get by with, uh, more around the two hundred thousand dollar mark. And, uh, on these one-way-in, one-way-out roads that are very limited to any future development, because there's nowhere to, to go, um, for, uh, increased traffic. So, we're hoping to replace all three of those bridges with, with this funding. Uh, we may have to have a little out-of-pocket. But the one sixty-fourth bridge, I believe it's, it's too late to put this money towards that, if that answers your question.
Yep, it does. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
Uh, Mark, I know that, you know, five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars sounds like a lot of money, but when you're talking about the cost of those bridges, I mean, it's, you start spreading it out, over twenty bridges or so, uh, it doesn't amount to a whole lot, but it certainly helps. We appreciate it.
It definitely does. This is a, a half, little over a half a million dollar windfall that we did not expect. So, uh, we plan to, that, that's a revenue that Highway Department was not expecting. Uh, it will be added to our two thousand and twenty budget. And that'll, that'll help us to, uh, prevent from taking reserves out that were gonna be spent on these bridges and put towards our, our larger projects, you know, Sheridan Lake, Rochford, and, and, well, the list goes on.
Excellent.
We'll keep that money in our piggy bank for, for future use.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
I'd make a motion to approve the funding agreement with the state of South Dakota for the apportionment of the Highway Infrastructure Program Funds for Bridge Replacement and Rehabilitation.
Sorry.
Moved by DeSanto, second by Drews. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
Does that get us halfway to our nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we need to?
Only DeSanto. So, number twelve was pulled, so we're on thirteen items from commission office. We need to reschedule the twenty, September nineteenth commission meeting, too. Um, this is for a BOC meeting. Uh, Ms. Holly, explanation, please?
Uh, we had previously rescheduled our September seventeenth meeting to the nineteenth. Um, it's come to light, a couple of commissioners have conflicts on the nineteenth. So, we're just looking for another date, um, for, to reschedule that commission meeting. A possibility would be Friday, the twentieth, or we just go till the following Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, and, um, go back-to-back meetings, week to week, to get caught back up. But end of September is when the twenty twenty budget has to be approved. So, uh, we definitely can't skip it, but we, we definitely need to reschedule.
Does anybody have a problem with the twentieth on a Friday? Ross Connect, Drews. LaCroy, DeSanto. Gonna try the twentieth?
At this point in time, I think the twentieth would be fine.
Friday, the twentieth, okay?
I guess so.
Okay.
Would you guys rather do back-to-back?
No. Friday, the twentieth, Ms. Holly? Do we need a motion?
There's a strong possibility that I will not be here, but you don't need me to run a meeting, so.
Just a meeting before. You'll be surprised. So, do we have a motion for the meeting on, to change it to September twentieth, please?
So, I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Motion by Drews, second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Item B is, uh, comments regarding scoping for environmental assessment for the proposed Rapid City Indian Health Services Health Center, Rapid City. Do you have a little explanation, Holly? I see, is it for public and commissioners, or?
Yes, commissioners, you received notice on June eighteenth of a request for comments for the scoping for the environmental assessment for the new IHS. Um, I did reach out, as there was a sentence in there that kinda confused me a little bit. Um, and they did respond back that they are welcoming any comments regarding all things related to the project as a whole at this time. So, I just wanted to bring the board's attention that the comment period is open. If this commission wishes to direct staff to prepare any comments, um, or look into it further. The comments would be due July eighteenth. Um, and your next commission meeting is July sixteenth.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
My comment on this is, I think IHS does vital work for our community and is a very important part of our community. And, and when I was reading through this, I think there's, you know, there's been a lot of talks that I haven't been involved with. But there's been concerns of where it's going, what's, what's happening with it. I think we support full-heartedly the, the IHS hospital in Rapid City. And it's, I do, in its current location, and it's gonna be there now. Um, we haven't been able to see any plans to be able to make any judgments. I know one of my biggest concerns is the historical value of some of the buildings. And I'd probably request, I, I think we could direct Holly to start a draft of, of support for the IHS itself. And then, if we find some historic, uh, gather some information on the historical preservation or something like that, we could add that. That could, could be discussed. But I think she could start one and then discuss it at our next meeting, and maybe have, uh, a version to be able to look at and review. I could work with Holly with that, if, if the commission's in support of that.
I'd like to look into what this is about a little bit more, because they're, they have a new scope of plans. And I was involved in some of the first plans, but, um, I guess, it would be into best of, our best interest to kinda look if we need to get involved. Does that make sense?
Does that make sense? Um, this is with the city, this is, um, this, this has all, it represents all constituents in the sense for county or city. But, um, I also wouldn't, I don't know. From what I've seen, there's a lot of controversy and I'm not afraid of controversy. I just want to make sure if we're putting support in there, that we're backing an agency and, and, and doing what the people want as well. So, um, to me, that's why I said I'd need more information out of this from listening to both sides. And then supporting one side or the other at this point for me, I don't know if I'm going there. But because I like what both sides had to say, I like the historical value and what has happened. But I also don't know enough about IHS to support, um, what they're doing. I don't know their background or anything. Does that make sense? And if they're a great in, agency or if they're, they're, um, people support, uh, their IHS services.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Just to follow up, I'm, I'm a user of IHS. So I, I'm familiar with how the operation works as far as the buildings and the new concept that's been going on for quite a while, you know, different locations and so forth. My general comment was the support of IHS in itself, you know, our community. I mean, I think it, it saves our, our services in Rapid City Regional plenty of money and it, and it also services pl- plenty of clients in our area. That's what I was talking about, the support of just the basic services. I don't think, uh, the building part of the support, I, I, I agree that, uh, as a Commissioner, I think, uh, a new building would improve their services and, and enhance our community. How they get there, uh, I, I'm thinking it's generic. I don't think we get into details of supporting how they get there. We're just supporting the services that they provide.
And maybe Commissioner LaCroy, it's, we would support the Rapid City Indian Health Service Health Center, not exactly the IHS. Does that make sense? Indian Health Services, but the center that they're building?
Yeah.
That's, that's a little bit different. And that way, whenever it comes or if it changes, it stays within, uh, what we're thinking that we do, we do support the center.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
I would make a motion that we, uh, defer formal action on this item until our next meeting so that we can develop further information for the Commission.
Said a motion and a second. Second by Drews, second by DeSanto. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Number fourteen is executive session. So we have SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two dash one for purpose of discussional per- personal matters. We have two items for executive session that are personal that I just said and moved to the late submission of two reclassifications. So, um, we have a couple of things going on in executive session that are personal. Do we have a motion, please?
Move to go into executive session.
Moved by DeSanto.
Second.
Second by Roskett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Motion to come out of executive session.
Motion by DeSanto, second by Roskett to come out of executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We do have one motion. Commissioner DeSanto, please.
I would make a motion to approve the late submission for two reclassifications. Jerry Urban, Administrative Assistant Two, Grade Sixteen, Step Six, for twenty-three dollars and thirty-five cents an hour. And for TJ Doref, On-Site Wastewater Specialist, Grade Fourteen, Step One, for nineteen dollars and ninety cents an hour. Both effective, starting with the January two thousand and nineteen pay period.
There's a motion by DeSanto.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, we'll have the Board of Adjustment, a motion to open Board of Adjustment.
So move.
Moved by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Good. Good morning, Commissioners. PJ Conover, Director, Planning Department. Item before you today is variance nineteen oh six for Randall Wheaton, which is a request to reduce the front yard setback from twenty-five feet to two feet to bring existing deck and residence into compliance. Mr. Wheaton is in the audience today if you have any questions. Um, this specific request, if you're looking at a variance, there are four criteria to meet. Um, as far as the first criteria, which is up on the board, staff has verified through a site visit that there's no particular conditions, as noted above, which warrant approval of variance nineteen oh six. In addition, there appears to be adequate room for the construction of a deck up for, on the single-family residence in locations other than the front of the house. In the second item, the setback variance would not grant an additional use that is not allowed in that zoning district. In the third item, strict application of the zoning ordinance would require the applicant to meet twenty-five-foot setback on their property. And the fourth item, uh, granting this setback variance would allow for reduced setback in limited agriculture district, which is not in harmony with the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Um, and as note, the Pennington County Highway Department has expressed concerns over the deck's proximity to Old Hill City Road. The property as it exists today, as mentioned, is limited agriculture district. Uh, the house was built in nineteen sixty-one, access is off of Old Hill City Road. There is no sink, there is no floodplain on the subject property. The deck was, uh, brought to our attention in two thousand and eighteen, um, was listed as a, uh, ordinance complaint. The applicant applied for the building permit for the existing deck. And at that time is when we discovered that the deck, um, and was encroaching in the twenty-five-foot front yard setback. Um, at that time, the, uh, landowner went and got a surveyor and the survey drawing is what you see on the screen, the entire drawing on the left and then a, a close-up of the one on the right. Originally, when the applicant, uh, applied, he was only, he only applied for the two-foot, uh, setback for the deck. And as staff looked into it a little bit more, adding a deck brought the legal non-conforming status of the house, which also encroached in the setback, out of compliance. So, uh, we re-advertised, uh, with the applicant's approval. And that's why before you is a request for the setback to two feet for an existing deck and the existing single-family residence. This was routed through the Interapartmental Review. The County Highway Department, uh, mentioned that they oppose any variance since Old Hill City Road is only, only has approximately forty-eight feet of right-of-way at this location. And, uh, the proximity of the deck to the road poses some safety hazard. The County Ordinance Enforcement Officer just mentioned that there was an open case and the building permit for the existing deck has not yet been approved. Uh, the existing single-family resident was legal non-conforming in nineteen sixty-one. And as mentioned, adding that deck brought the house out of compliance. If the Board chooses to have the deck removed, um, that house could still stay in compliance and would not need to be removed. Um, with that, if the Board of Adjustment chooses to approve variance nineteen oh six, staff recommends, uh, only one condition be included.
So, um, one second, Commissioner Drews. Um, how many houses besides this one are in the right-of-way? Basically, in the easement for the road, because it looks like there's a bunch of, when you drive down this road, it's not just this house or this deck. And it's already, you're not going to get twenty-five feet, no matter what, when you have a house built.
Sixty-one.
So sixty-one is when the house was built. And just from probably about a month ago, if you drive this road and maybe Commissioner Roskett can reiterate that. Because all of the houses were built so long ago, I don't know how they widened that road no matter what, anyway. So just my comment, Commissioner Drews.
PJ.
Yes, sir.
So if the deck wasn't on the house, the house complies because of being grandfathered? Is that what you're telling us?
Correct. The house was built in nineteen sixty-one. And, uh, ending prior to February second, nineteen ninety-four, was essentially grandfathered.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
My, uh, biggest concern with allowing for this variance, and I understand it'd be a great, you know, inconvenience for this homeowner to remove that deck. But he could possibly just remove that end of the deck, back to maybe the center of the house or have access to that deck on the, I guess it would be the, uh, north or southeast end of the house. Um, is the Highway Department's concern? I mean, this leaves us, this leaves us at a disadvantage if work needs to be done on that highway for some reason or another, and then we wind up getting stuck after by that deck.
PJ, is there a mechanism, mechanism in place that if we?
Hold on, Commissioner Roskett. Um, Commissioner DeSanto, were you done?
I'm done.
Okay, Commissioner Roskett.
PJ, is there a mechanism in place, should the deck, we allow the variance and if the Highway Department had to work on that road and widen it, that we could have a stipulation that the owner would realize that they would have to do as Mark said, modify the deck so it wouldn't be, uh, encroaching on the right-of-way?
There might be, I'm not aware of what that mechanism would be or say.
So PJ, if you could bring that picture up with the trees and the road, the whole road.
Area again, sure.
So if you look at the other side of the road, too, it looks like there's no houses or anything. It seems like if you're going to build the road anyway, it looks like you're going to hit a bunch and get a bunch of houses close on the same side that he is on, that if you were going to build the road bigger, you'd go, if that's north, it isn't here, it looks like.
That is correct.
Then you'd build that road widening on the other side. They've had to do that in different areas in Rapid City because people already built in that sixty-six foot or whatever right-of-way. So they had to go to the other side because they, fortunately, houses were built nineteen sixty-one in other areas. Now, if there was a bunch of houses across the street, then I'd probably, for me, become sense that, you know, take that deck down. But, um, if you have room for a road on the other side and maybe in the future, when we look at this and someone wants to get that close, then I could see that happening. But these houses right now, I can tell you, if you go down that road, you're going to have a lot of encroachment already that you're not going to be able to build that road right there, anyway.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Um, I would have no problem agreeing to this variance if we had a release of liability included in the variance.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd like to hear what the applicant has to say because I think part, part of the deal on this is there was no permit request before the building was done. So I think that had, I'd like to have him address that. That's going to make my decision.
Can the applicant come up and state your name, sir, please?
Yeah, when I applied for the building permit, I didn't realize.
Hold on, sir. Your name, sir?
Uh, Randall Wheaton.
Wheaton. Okay, sir.
I didn't realize it was going to take so long to get it. So I just, I work over in the mine, so I'm only off fourteen days a month. So I just went to work and started building, you know, the next few, the month, you know. It's not totally done yet, but I, I just, when I'm off, I have to work. So if I'm going to get stuff done, because I'm basically gutting that whole house and remodeling the whole thing. And if you looked at the house beforehand, all the steps that were on the front of it had all sunk down four inches and the brick, it was all covered in brick and they're all, it was all falling off the house, so.
So the deck, there was a deck there before you just rebuilt it?
There wasn't a deck, there was just concrete steps that had all sunk away. So from the, from the house, it was all in terrible disarray.
Okay.
And then the, the one side of the deck had water issues where there was no gutters on the house and water was, ice was building up to where it was, going to run in the windows of the basement, so.
Mr. Wheaton, do you need that corner that's closest to that road? Meaning where Mr. Ross Connect and Mr. DeSanto, do you need that piece of the deck to continue on? Or can you stop it a little bit further back?
I would like to have it just so, you know, people have a place to sit on that side of the house if they're out there. But, I mean, I could always cut an angle of it off, too. If you look on that picture, there's two poles here.
I was looking at.
And that would give another five to six feet more room there.
That, that makes more sense than just, you know, doing a liability thing, take that five or six feet so it's angled because it'd still make a nice deck in the front.
And as far as the, as far as the city, are them widening that road? I mean, I would be totally opposed to them widening the road there anyway because there's rocks right in front of my house and I have three trees right there. They'd have to take those out, too, and I don't, I don't really want my trees or that rock gone.
Right. And you know the right-of-way was there, um, when, when you build a road, that right-of-way is always the city or the counties for a certain amount of feet. So if you're building stuff in that, that's still the county's right-of-way.
Madam Chair.
But that's fine.
Just, just as a reminder, our, your.
You're good, Commissioner LaCroy. Go ahead, Commissioner LaCroy.
Thanks for answering that. But, um, part of the concern that I had was, is it's not just the deck now that's two-foot, but the, the house has always been, so that's why it's down to two-foot. And from the pictures, you did a very good job remodeling. That bump out, that was the only, that was always like that, right? You didn't add that, you didn't add that bump out from the...
Um, we're going to pull that picture up, Lloyd, what you're talking about, the bump out.
You can see all those little squares. So did you change any of the footprint of the house at all?
The footprint, no, uh-uh.
So that's how the, the bump out?
No, because, uh, they actually.
That screen, is that a screen porch or is that part of the living room?
That, oh, that bump out, no, that was there.
Is it a screen, is it a screen porch or is that living quarters?
Uh, well, it was, it was a screened, I guess it was all, it was all covered in windows. But it was all, actually, my, the bathrooms downstairs are under that porch. There's two bathrooms under that porch.
But, okay.
I didn't, I didn't.
Is there heat? Let me ask, is that, that's not a screened, it may have been a screened porch, but you enclosed it now?
It, well, it, no, it had, it was all windows. It was full of windows and I just, I, in fact, some of the, the big windows in there are the windows that were there.
Okay.
What I did.
So do you have the heat into there and everything else?
Yeah, I saw, I.
Walls are all insulated? Were they?
Walls are all insulated.
Were they like that when you bought it?
No, it, well, the walls were all there and everything was there. What I did is I took all the windows out because they had just a menagerie of all kinds of.
Do you understand what I'm talking about by, by a screened porch?
Yeah.
It's a sunroom.
It was a windowed porch with the two bathrooms underneath it. It was there existing. What I did is tore all the windows back out, took part of the walls out and rebuilt them and put the windows back in. And insulated it so that it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it didn't have heat in it before.
The rea- the reason why I ask that is because I think originally it was a screened porch or a sunroom or something along those lines. And he made it into a finished room and then he wanted more decking. And that kind of just makes me sigh a little bit on this whole thing because I think you're getting more square footage now and then now you want your porch. You're already in the right-of-way. I just kind of, I'm just trying to gather a little bit of facts to make a decision. I'm going to hear what the rest of my Commissioners say.
If you looked on this side of the house, underneath the windows in the basement, the go into the basement there, when I bought the place, the ice was up to the edge of the windows. So that's why I put a rubber bladder system under the deck to keep all the water and ice away and put it, put gutters on it to try to solve that water issue.
Commissioner Drews.
Mr. Wheaton, the property across the road from you, is that private property?
I think it is.
Okay.
I think it is and it's, uh, most of it's cliff.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskett.
Uh, we don't have the dimensions on this drawing, but the part, uh, between the house, uh, the, the narrow part of the deck, what would that be, eight feet?
I think it might, I think it might just be six.
Okay, that would be six and then the wider part of the deck would be?
Wider parts are fourteen.
Fourteen?
Fourteen from the wall out to the end.
I like Mark's idea, kind of a compromise that we could sit there and take an angle, still give you three to four feet that you could, uh,
Yeah.
get from one end of the deck to the other, but, uh, not a total variance, but modify the deck.
Cut that one that's close to the road, cut an angle across there and.
Would that be possible, the way that it's, uh?
Yeah, I could do that. That's not a problem.
It'd give you about four to six feet away then, instead of two feet right from the?
Well, it basically, because of the angle of the road, if he angled that deck out from the corner of the house, you wouldn't even be here asking for a variance because I don't think he'd.
No, it's twenty-five feet, honey.
Oh, he would?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
If you look where those, where those rocks are in the picture, yeah. They look, that rock looks closer than it is, but it's out there pretty close to that other front door over there. It's like twenty-one feet right there.
To PJ.
A, a lot of the issue is it's zone-limited agriculture and it's only, it's under an acre. And that's a lot of the problem.
Okay.
If he angled that, PJ, and taken off how far?
Uh, depends on how much he angled it, um.
Angled it so the setback would be a little bit further with that corner, like Mr. Roskett's saying? That way we have the schematics, so when he builds it, he knows, um, what we're saying if we decide that he can build it.
Can I take this out? Is that what?
That's what I'd say, yes.
There's also, um, some discussion in the back, which might be a possible solution for this, but it would require a continuation probably till September to look at something that's called an encroachment. that's called an encroachment agreement.
You know what I'm saying?
There's been similar issues like this and.
Hold on, guys. DeSanto, DeSanto, you guys, hold on a second.
Okay. There's, there's been similar encroachments like this in the county that have brought up that type of document. But it would take the state's attorney some time to look into it. So it may be able to address all the concerns that we have. And also, if the road needs to be widened later, what would have to happen with that. So it's just another option.
What our planning director is saying is that if you want the full deck, you can, you can do an encroachment application. You have to continue this until September. And then around September, then we decide if we agree with the encroachment papers that you have to sign and that you could leave your deck then. Or today, what they're looking into, the commissioners, some of the commissioners are looking for a solution, that you cut some of that deck off on that corner and make that encroachment less.
Yeah.
If, Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
So if it's an encroachment, it relieves us of liability. Is that correct? As opposed to a variance? If it's an, if he applies for the encroachment, we give him the encroachment?
That's something we'd still need to look into. There's encroachment agreement used now, but not the way you think, like an encroachment into a right-of-way because of a private structure.
Okay.
This was actually introduced to our office from another lawyer representing somebody else in the county. And we're still looking into that as a viable option and some wording and the legality of it. But it's gonna take our state's attorney some time to research.
Mr. Wheaton, this, this is your decision. If you'd like to try to get it through the Board of Adjustment today, they sound like they want you to cut some of the deck, the corner off to a certain extent, which they need to make that into motion. Or you can wait and see if you can get that encroachment, leave your full deck.
I'd just kinda like to get the deck finished and, and move on with other parts of the house. But, I mean, I would be willing to cut, you know, portions of it. Like if you look in the one picture, I think I took a picture of the, the end of the deck there, if you can bring that up.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Oh, see, I was thinking of going from that second post from the end, going across there. And that would give you.
Yep.
That would give you six to seven feet, I think.
That's, that's what I was thinking. So.
From this, from the second post here.
This one?
Yeah, and over to the other post in the back, back here, which is about, it would basically cut off.
Cut that plank off.
Forty-five, it'd look fine.
Commissioner Ross Connect, do you have a?
My motion would be to cut the corner of that deck off so that it'd be parallel to that north lot line for a distance of seven feet.
Is there a second?
That would work. I could do that.
Second.
For discussion.
Been a motion and a second? Discussion?
I have one more question to ask of Michelle. If we issue this variance, I understand that according to the highway department, that we could have a liability for that deck. My question would be, is if somebody slides off that corner and takes that deck out, are we liable for that?
I wish I had an answer for you. I'd have to be able to take a closer look. My understanding is limited that this was a pre-existing structure. I don't know what the diameters of that pre-existing structure were. Any additional building beyond what might be grandfathered in would be subject to removal. If you grant the variance and then they decide to, and then we need to expand that road, then you're absolutely right. That could be considered a taking of his property now. And we would have to pay him. I think what PJ's talking about is that recently, there've been a few issues dealing with encroachment into right-of-ways. This is a right-of-way. And the encroachment agreement is something new to us. And so to answer your question with, so the alternative would be for us to enter an encroachment agreement with this gentleman where he would agree that he would have to remove that structure should we have to expand the road.
To expand a little further on my question, I'm a little, I'm concerned that if we issue the variance, somebody slides off the road and hits that, that's sticking out where we gave permission for it to stick out to. If it wasn't there, they would've never hit anything. Can they come and sue us to repair their car?
They can sue us for anything? I think they could.
People can sue us for anything, I suppose.
Yeah. But I think, I mean, the question would be, what, the question would become, but for the granting of this variance, would that accident have occurred?
So I have, I have one question. And maybe I'm going on the, Ms. Fink, you've done this engineer before. I need to ask you a question. She's, I know she's done a lot of this kind of stuff. Tell me your thoughts on this deck and, and you're an engineer. I mean, that road, and we've seen this many times in the city where they've already built something. And they're already too far into that right-of-way that, you know, this is a nineteen sixty-one house.
Um, okay. First of all, I'd clarify, I'm not an engineer I work for, and I'm in an engineering company. But I have a pretty fair working knowledge of this. It's, it's a difficult or, or tough question to address. Actually, my thoughts when I look at this, I see the survey shows the lot being actually in the road right-of-way. But I understand that there's state statute that if a road is in existence in a particular location and maintained for a certain period of time, which Old Hill City Road has been there for ages, then the right-of-way differs to the actual location. So I'm not certain that the right-of-way doesn't encroach even further into the property itself. That would be my initial concern or question. I think it's, nobody can answer the question without, about the liability issue until that circumstance occurs and how successful somebody would be, the seriousness of the injuries. I think, in my opinion, if you have an option to remediate that or not aggravate the encroachment, that would probably be a safer path than to.
Add to the encroachment and let it stay there?
To add to an existing, even if it's legal non-conforming, adding to that non-conformity or creating additional encroachment probably puts you at risk and potentially sets an uncomfortable precedent for other people who might be in a similar situation. And I apologize. I hate to stick my oar into your water.
I, I asked you that also because I've seen you on a lot of this, give solution or compromise. And I'm agreeing only because you have a deck by a road. At first, this sounded like a great idea to try to, there'd be people sitting on that deck and stuff right next to the road. So if, if it was an encroachment and, and he has the, he has the power to move that deck somewhere else, I'm listening to what Mr. DeSanto's saying, what Lloyd's saying on the encroachment. And that's why I asked you, Ms. Fink, because you do have common sense with it. But then it brings up the point, we could cut that deck off, but we're also putting a deck in front of a house right next to a road. So if it was just an encroachment in the house that you already had, sir, I would seem to think that would be okay because there's nothing we could do. But there's gonna be people sitting on that deck, hanging out on that deck.
Coming, coming from that way, though, too, there's also a telephone pole there. Then there's a rock and three trees in front of the rest of the deck.
Yes, which, which were encroached in the right-of-way, sir. So you also put something so they could, instead of hit your house, hit a tree and stuff. I don't know if that's good.
I mean, I see, I see what you're saying. And I understand that. But most people are going thirty miles an hour right there, and my driveway's right there. So I mean.
Yep.
Madam Chair.
It's not like people are going fifty miles an hour.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner LeCroy.
Thanks for all the input. I seconded the removal of the corner as Mr. Ross connected because then we're doing, we're making an effort to get it further back. The house is already legal non-conforming. I like that idea. What was that you were calling?
Encroachment agreement?
Encroachment agreement. I like the encroachment agreement. I'm still swaying back and forth. Is there a way that we could take the action that he cut out part of that deck as stated, as in the motion, and also, also come back with an encroachment agreement both? Not just this, have him remove part and come back when the research is done? I mean, is that possible?
I don't know the answer to that. It's got two different.
Because he's, well, it kinda is, but he's still encroaching. I mean, would it be approved if he, if the variance, if he cuts it off?
Right.
But I'd still like to have him come back with an encroachment agreement.
So the, basically, the motion would be what you said, Commissioner Ross Connect, but it would have a second on that, meaning amendment to it, which says that you still, sir, Mr. Wheaton, would have to follow through with an encroachment agreement and come back to us with that agreement, right?
Unless I'm muddering up the water.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. We have two issues here. What liability the county might be assuming by approving this variance. And that is a concern if we allow this gentleman to further encroach into the right-of-way beyond what is legal non-conforming. There have, there's been prior precedent, I believe there was several years ago where a young man was seriously injured at the Canyon Lake Park. And the city sustained a very large damage award against them in that case. So there's that issue. And then the other issue is what if we, what if we want to expand the road? So, and that involves encroachment agreement. And what I'm saying is, we're not sure about the valid, validity of those agreements under South Dakota law. And we haven't had a chance to research those. My suggestion would be to continue this matter so that we can better determine whether encroachment agreement is even viable.
Okay.
I would make a substitute motion to continue to the, is it the eighteenth?
Of July?
Yeah.
Sixteen.
We, no.
Hold on.
No later than September seventeenth. It's gonna take some time.
Oh, it will.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So what do you do with his deck till then? Leave it up?
It's already there.
For the time being.
Okay.
Continue it to, would?
No later than September seventeenth.
So would, the second meeting in August would work? Would that be enough time?
Not seventeen, twenty.
Twenty?
Motion to continue, let's go there. September twentieth would be when we continue this, too.
I'd like to give him time to finish his deck before winter comes, too.
I think he finished it, didn't he?
No, no, the rails, I gotta put the.
Mr. Wheaton, Mr. Wheaton, come up to the mic for me.
Could we have, continue it to mid-August? Would that give you time to research that? Second meeting in August?
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. We'll make every effort to complete our research by then. We are a little bit short-staffed at this time, but we'll make every effort.
Okay.
To say that he has a deck that he can use right now, it doesn't need to be finished without a building permit. And number two, that September twentieth, that way, if he builds a deck and he decides that that encroachment or he finds out that he shouldn't have, he's gonna have to pull more of that stuff down.
Right.
Makes sense? So I'd, I'd let him leave what he has up there. But, but by September twentieth, hopefully, we have a better answer.
Okay. Let's just continue to September twentieth.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Been a motion, September twentieth? All second it for discussion. Commissioner Ross Connect.
My question would be, is there any part of that deck right now that could stay and be in compliance?
No. Well, barely. Probably the small section over here.
We're talking about the whole deck, essentially.
Considerable amount, yes, sir.
Commissioner Ross Connect, he's gonna be able to leave what he has built up? Okay. So we do have a motion to continue to September twentieth and a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
I just had one comment. But I can make, I'll make a comment afterward. Aye with that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. That was all. All opposed. Motion carries. Commissioner LeCroy.
Only comment, I'd say from the discussions of, if I was him, between now and September, I'd probably take that corner off. That's just me personally.
Okay. Thank you. Now we come out of Board of Adjustment. Motion, please.
Motion to come out of a Board of Adjustment?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Get Conover your consent agenda. Sorry.
That's okay.
They're saying that.
The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion voted the Board. Item is made to remove for the consent agenda and placed on a regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item B, second reading of rezon nineteen oh six and comprehensive plan amendment nineteen oh six for Megamore LLC, Fisk Land Surveying as the agent and Planning Commission recommended approval. Item C, minor plat, MPL nineteen sixteen for John and Ann Hovdeness, Fisk Land Surveying as the agent and Planning Commission recommended approval. Item D, layout plat, LPL nineteen fifteen for Derry and Marcy Graeber, Planning Commission recommend continuation to the, or it is recommended to be continued to the July sixteen, two thousand nineteen Board of Commissioners meeting.
Thank you. Send, at this time, anybody from the public wish to remove any items B, C, and D? If not, Commissioners, anyone who would like to remove any items B, C, and D for discussion?
No.
Not? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
We gotta make a motion in a second first.
Yeah.
Need a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
LeCroy, okay. Motion by DeSanto, second by LeCroy. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. B, C, and D, we already got approval?
She's trying to hurry along for him.
Regular agenda items. Item E, please.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thenson, County Planner. Agenda item E is layout plat nineteen seventeen. The applicant, Brian Book, has applied for layout plan to reconfigure lot lines in order to create two lots from three existing lots in the ranch at Black Gap subdivision. As it stands today, you have lot twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. All are zoned, planned unit development districts. All take access off of Morningstar Court. And there are no special flood hazard areas on either of them. Specifically, lot twelve is point six-four acres. It contains a single-family residence built in two thousand and five. It does have a permitted onsite wastewater treatment system. Lot thirteen consists of point six-one acre. It's currently vacant of any structures. Lot fourteen is point nine-three acre and is also vacant.
Thank you. Any questions for Jason? A motion?
Root for approval.
Motion by LeCroy.
Good.
Second by Drews. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jason. Item F?
Item F, minor plat nineteen eighteen and subdivision regulations nineteen oh five. The applicant is Laurent Lippard. He's applied for a minor plat and is requesting subdivision regulation variance to reconfigure lot lines in order to create lot ten R and lot eleven of Brogdon Grass subdivision. This request has been for the Board in April of this year when layout plan nineteen oh six was approved with twelve conditions.
Sir, motion or discussion?
Move to approve.
Move by DeSanto?
Second.
Second by LeCroy. Discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda item G is a follow-up to that last agenda item. It's a rezone and comprehensive plan amendment for Lauren Lippard for the thirty-five point forty-two acres, changing that from general agriculture district to limited agriculture district. Applicant has also requested to amend the Pendleton County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from general agriculture district to limited agriculture district.
Do you have a motion or discussion?
No discussion. Move to approve.
Move by DeSanto? Second by LeCroy? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jason. Item H is a proposed ordinance amendment, single-family resident minimum size requirement update.
Yes, Commissioners. PJ Conover, Director of Planning Department. Item E, as you mentioned it, this is just an update. So if you remember back in June, the, the Board, under the request of Commissioner Ross Connect, directed planning staff to look into the twenty-foot wide requirement for single-wide mobile homes and also the twenty-by-twenty unit size requirement for single-family residences. While we're not ready yet to tackle the twenty-by-twenty-foot unit size requirements as a whole, because that's gonna require a lot of extra research because it's gonna have an overarching effect on many, many existing ordinances. I do have a request to the Board to consider possibly for section three oh four for the twenty-foot sides.
for the twenty-foot side for the mobile home requirement. Now, that, from my understanding, was put in place years ago to limit the number of mobile homes that were put into the, single-wide mobile homes put into the county. Since nineteen ninety-five, my research, that's as far back as I've gone, there's not, there's over a hundred and fifty conditional use permits to allow single fam, uh, single-wide mobile homes in the county. So the voting pattern of the Planning Commission seems to be contrary to the ordinance. So that's what we're looking to change. Staff does not disagree with changing the requirement. What staff is looking for direction from the, the Board is if we were to remove the twenty-foot minimum requirement for one side of a single-wide mobile home, could we then instill the requirements for the HUD codes? They're basically an increased codes in the building standards for manufactured homes. It took effect on June fifteenth, nineteen seventy-six and changed the construction of mobile homes considerably. That was the biggest move probably that affected the construction of mobile homes. Prior to that date, and I use mobile homes interchangeably, but prior to that date, they're considered mobile homes, after that date, they're actually considered manufactured homes, so.
So PJ, maybe you could bring to the Board those HUD standards, those standards that you're talking about, and then, then have us look at that and then have a, a better discussion, a further discussion on what you'd like to see, cause it sounds like a good solution.
It is, it would put a year requirement on the homes. There are some of the requirements that are listed in the memo before you, and we're only looking to do it on new mobile homes coming into the county and not necessarily in existing mobile home parks.
Right, cause of the grandfathered in.
Yep. But before we devote the time to it, like you suggest, we can bring that forward to you in greater detail if the Board is okay with that direction.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Nothing further.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the update. Next is items from Chair and Commission members. I have one update. We have the Stall Barn, it cost us a hundred dollars to go through a minor amendment through the city instead of a major for the floodplain amendment and the minor, or CUP. So, just so everybody knows, it takes up to thirteen days to bring that through. They decided that they wouldn't have us do a major amendment, which would have cost us two hundred and fifty dollars for having us do a minor. I'd like to thank Kale from Long Branch Engineering for doing all the work on that. That was just, um, he donated his time to do everything that we've done with the Stall Barn so far, so we appreciate him from the fairgrounds. I know at this point, we just learned that yesterday, otherwise I would have updated you a little bit quicker, that it went to Mike Cool. So, um, if that's okay, I don't need a motion or anything, but I just wanted to update you that that was moving forward at a hundred dollars, so.
Okay. Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
After going and attending, and I know this isn't a committee report, so I won't make the committee report at this time, but a couple of things came to light at the extension meeting last night that I attended. And one of them is that that building, which is our building, they lease it from us, is getting a lot of moisture trapped in between the roof and the ceiling, which, when you walk in that building, you can smell dampness and possibly mold. The reason being is there's several leaks, the leaks have been repaired, but the moisture was not addressed when the leaks were repaired. So that moisture is still up there causing problems and could cause significant problems to that building in the future. So I'm gonna be talking to Mike Cool about how we can mitigate that problem. I know that the, that the, uh, extension has spoken to Mike in the past about getting a dehumidifier, but I don't think, a dehumidifier might work for the interior of the building, but it's not gonna do anything for the, in-between the roof and the ceiling. And so we, that's something that's going to need to be addressed if we're gonna keep that building in good repair and not wind up having to do some major repairs in the future. So I'll talk to Mike about that. So that's all I have for that.
Okay, do we wanna start on committee reports, or we have any other update? Commissioner LaCroy, please.
I think one report is, I attended, uh, I think it was last week, the Mayor's Early Childhood Development Work, Workshop, there was a big, good turnout. This is the National League of Cities floor, um, format that they're, they're starting and they have Malcolm Chapman facilitating it, along with a couple of other people. And one of the things they stressed is the early childhood development, I don't know, Deb probably remembers the early childhood that Malcolm had started from then, I'll see. And this is like a step up, and it's gonna take a long process, but there was, I bet you, there had been fifty people that all work in the industry in attendance and then doing work groups, they broke out into four groups and they're, uh, I'm on the leadership team where we're, we're doing, uh, trying to come up with the verbiage for PSAs and so forth and, and identify what's going on. So I mean, one of the things they did stress is this is gonna be a long working group, it's, it's gonna take a while. So, uh, very interesting.
Just a question on that.
What's that?
Commissioner LaCroy, just a question. With early childhood, and that's why, I guess, that was always my question, and maybe you could answer, maybe you have to ask Malcolm, is why isn't it going through like the school system or YFS or something instead of just the city?
Well, this is from birth to three, and they've already started, uh, Starting Strong. That's part of what Malcolm did is after five and so forth, so. And, and YFS has done, I, there's different facets of, of the learning. So, and it's helping from the discussions that they've had, it's helping the families do what they need to do, the education part and so forth. I can't give you the exact, Deb, but yeah, from birth to three or five is this, is where this is at. The other ones, I think the schools been involved as far as coming to the meetings with the Starting Strong that Malcolm started, that's a little different step. But Malcolm's always been very forward and very educational is that early childhood developments are the most important times of the year. And how do we get the families ready and assist in doing that? And they're in the early stages, Deb, so I can't really give any details, but yeah, birth to three.
I can call him too, thank you, Lloyd.
Yeah, Malcolm would help you out with that. So we're in discussions with that. The other thing I had was, uh, I had a conference call with the National, or, uh, I'm on the South Dakota Advisory Commission, South Dakota Advisory to the Commission for Civil Rights. Running the end of my term is this year in August. We done three site visits and took testimony on, on subtle effects of racism. And so we did the, the reports, and we're, we're trying to finalize our, our final report to the Commission. And so we're working on, on that. We did, we did site visits to, to Pier, Pine Ridge, and Aberdeen, and took testimony, and we've got all the minutes from that, we're going through that. And then we, some leadership changed and our final report's coming, and we decided we want three more weeks before it's gotta go to Washington's legal team to view our reports, to make sure everything we're saying is legal. So it's gonna be pushed, and hopefully, hopefully by August of this year, we can have a full report that can get taken to the Commission of Civil Rights. And once I get a copy and it's okay to, to release, I get a copy that distributed to the Commission or have it in the office. So that was one other thing that, uh, the two major things that I had since our last meeting.
Thank you, Lloyd. Commissioner DeSanto.
Attended the, uh, extension meeting last night, and really, uh, the biggest thing to discuss or to, uh, report. They have a wish list. Their wish list, we, I have encouraged them to set priorities as far as needs and wants. Most all of what they have on their wish list at this point in time are, are needs. And all of that wish list fits well into their budget, where, where they would still have even remaining monies left over after they complete that wish list. There's a couple of things on it that they haven't been able to price out just yet, but the ones that they haven't been able to price out just yet are more wants than needs. So they're focusing on their needs, and then if they have money left over, they'll, might be coming before us to ask us for some of their wants. I think their wants are justified and would improve the educational process that 4H provides. So hopefully, we'll see if it, uh, allow them to do that, which also reminds me, I, I encourage them to talk to buildings and grounds. One of the things that they would like is a projector, an overhead projector from, not an overhead projector, but what they, what they call these. Used to be overhead projectors were the things you sit on the table and put your, but anyway, back in the day. I told them to talk to buildings and grounds because it seemed to me that last year we had a kind of a redoing of one of the rooms, and they took out an overhead projector and put in new. At least I think we set some to surplus, I don't know if they're still sitting around or what, but.
Mr. DeSanto, I might have one in one of our offices with the screen, it's not as big as this, but it's still pretty good-sized screen with a projector that might be something you need.
That'd be just great.
So maybe I can have someone come, come over and look at it.
That would be good.
Since we're selling that building, I don't think they're gonna need that. Just, if you'd like to come over to see sometime or bring them, whoever, you know.
Yeah, Kim.
That you can.
Cause they were also looking for a screen, too.
So, that's cool.
Their screen gets stuck all the time, so.
Cool.
That's what I have to report.
And it's new, cause my husband didn't use it much, so.
Okay.
He used to use it for the rush games and stuff back in the day, even in his office, so.
Well, that's what I call networking.
Mr. DeSanto, or Roskinet, sorry.
More of a progress report than a committee report. Uh, at the request of a lot of citizens around Hill City and, and my district, I got with Mark Miller, or Joe Miller, and the Hill City Prevailor last week, and we published a, uh, in the, June twenty-sixth, there's a article explaining the status of the Sheridan Lake Road, Rochford Road, and the Rochford Bridge.
Good job.
Uh, we're gonna follow that up at the public meeting at the Rochford, Rochford Volunteer Fire Department, twenty-second of July at six P.M., that'll be in the paper. It's a public meeting, and Joe will have a enlarged set of preliminary plans that we can show anybody that's interested in coming to that particular meeting.
We can put that on our website if we have, Holly, do we have updates? Commissioner Roskinet, you could get with Holly's to make sure that's on our county website.
Yep, we'll get that put on there. Last week, I attended the first, I guess, our Commissioners, the first attendance, Black Hills Council of Local Governments, and it was really, really interesting, and there's Commissioners and there's Mayors, and we had South Dakota DOT Mike Carlson, who's been working with us on the Crowell Ready Mix, uh, traffic concerns. He presented what they call a two thousand twenty, the two thousand twenty-three STIP Development Meeting. It's their, it's, that's acronym for South Dakota Transportation Improvement Program. These are, that would include the Sheridan Lake Road and South Rochford Road. Those are assigned project numbers, thirty-two and thirty-nine respectively for Rochford and Sheridan Lake Road. If anybody wants to go down to the office here in Rapid City, you give them the numbers, they'll pull the file up and give you the details. And, I mean, those are the two that would be of interest to me, but there's a lot of other, uh, major product, or projects going on in, in the five counties here. There will be a public formal meeting regarding any of these projects, July the eleventh, two thousand nineteenth, Rapid City Ramakota. So if anybody's got concerns on these projects, as Mike said, if, if you wanna change anything, you wanna come to those meetings and let your voice be heard.
Something Ron Jeffries would need to go to, wouldn't it?
What's that?
That meeting that you just stated?
For Campbell Street?
Yeah, for Campbell Street, Ron Jeffries might wanna.
I can't remember if I, I think he knows, but, um, yeah, I, I, if you would tell him, Lloyd, that would be good. For some reason, I think his name came up, was somebody knowing that he was doing that, but I would, I would tell him again on July eleventh, Lloyd, just to make sure the fairgrounds got their needs. Good point.
You're on the roll.
The only other thing is, uh, me and Joe and Mark went out a couple, about six weeks ago to, uh, concerned citizens on Sheridan Lake Road, flooding issues, and I'll let Mark explain. I think last week, couple of weeks ago, Mark, what, what your mitigation was on the, on the property on Sheridan Lake Road? Joe sent me some pictures, but evidently, we did some trenching to mitigate some of that water runoff.
I'm sorry, could, I didn't hear, quite hear what you said there.
Oh, on the Sheridan Lake Road, that property that we went out and looked at on, on the corner of, uh, where they were getting the flooding issues?
Oh, Spring Canyon Trail.
Right.
And Sheridan Lake Road, yes.
He might explain what we did there, just to, so that they couldn't come back to us and complain that we didn't do anything.
Okay, yes, about a year ago, we were approached on that, that there were some drainage issues in that area. Might have affected, uh, we didn't know about a basement at that time, but it may be a septic system there, and they were getting some water issues coming off of some driveways across the road on Spring Canyon Trail and down Spring Canyon Trail itself, and, uh, these, we offered at the time to do a temporary fix that, I talked to a couple of the Commissioners at the time, and, um, a permanent or a long-term fix would have included installing quite a bit of culvert, and it would have went under Sheridan Lake Road, uh, at, at a pretty high cost. And with the, the project, Sheridan Lake Road project slated to come into play, we decided not to spend those funds and try a, a temporary, uh, fix of the drainage issues. The property owners at the time, or one of the property owners at the time kind of declined because we wanna put a little ditch in their yard and, and funnel water to a cross culvert on Sheridan Lake Road. But, uh, the current owners, uh, we talked to the other day, a couple of weeks ago, and they agreed that, uh, it would be money better spent on a temporary drainage issue and, and then, uh, knowing that the long-term fix will come along with the Sheridan Lake Road project. So everything went well there. We did get a ditch cut, a small ditch cut in their yard, or, well, it's, actually, it's in the right of way. It's not in their yard, but it's right on the edge, and funneled the water to Sheridan Lake Road, uh, from both properties. So I think we should be set real good from now until the construction project starts.
Thanks for doing that, just glad to make these people know that we're out there doing what we're supposed to be doing.
Yes, we try, we, we get out there and we do our best.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
That's all I got, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto?
Ron, the time of that eleventh, July eleventh meeting?
Seven P.M.
Thank you.
Commissioner Drews?
I have nothing.
July eleventh.
Okay, I have a couple of things, I also attended Black Hills Council Local Governments, and Ron pretty much hit on everything that we were talking about. Again, um, the Highway sixteen corridor is coming up, six months. We also asked him if they could, um, I asked Mike Carlson if he could give us update what's happening with Crowell, meaning, um, if they're putting that turn lane in and who's paying what, and there's some information on that coming forward. So he's going to update us on anything that he has as a commission. Um, let's see, what else do I have? Happy Fourth of July, that's coming up. Independence Day, that's always an awesome time, I love the red, white, and blue colors always have, and I just think it's a great day to, um, honor our people that served our country and, um, know that our country's still great, so. Anything else on committee reports or anything the Commissioners said?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner?
Well, one more, I got the, this with, with the Commissioners of the other counties, and we talked about bridges and, 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 uh, bridges going out, and we talked about the Bridge Improvement Grant, or BIG. And I asked the other counties, uh, all the counties that were there, they were all part of the Wheel Tax, and they agreed that it was beneficial for them to belong to the Wheel Tax. And they suggested if we ever do that, if we proceed, and I think Minnehaha is gonna. And they suggested if we ever do that, if we proceed, and I think Many Ha Ha is gonna be jumping on the bandwagon here in the next year. So, the key to, for Lawrence County is to do the five dollars per wheel on anything over six thousand pounds. And then, anything under six thousand pounds, they said it's up to, he said you can go, actually, you don't have to impose any wheel tax, but he said that the larger the vehicle, six thousand or they're the ones that should be paying the five dollars because they're the ones that do the most damage. So, that, uh, six thousand seems to be the magic number that worked for Lawrence County. Thought I'd just point that out.
Commissioner LaCroy?
Sorry. One last thing I wanted to bring up that I'd be looking into. Many of us have met with some of the housing, you know, David Glass had taken over the, from Black Hills Area Foundation, that hired him to do affordable housing. And he'd met with, I think several of us about, uh, adopted, Pendleton County adopting ordinance that would abate taxes for affordable housing project. Because the legislature just last year passed a bill in the session that permits counties to target affordable housing for abatements. My response was, he, was to him is that I'd look into it and bring it back to this Commission. So, I just wanted to give people a heads up that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Holly will have to do some more work.
She's not gonna hang around Lloyd no more. Next is items from the public. Anybody from the public would like to speak? If not, motion to adjourn?
Nope.
Vouchers.
Oh, did I miss vouchers? I did. Eighteen. Approval vouchers?
Move for approval.
Move by LaCroy?
Second.
Second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I got too much writing on my paper. Next is motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Move by DeSanto?
Second.
Second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Have a nice fourth.